All right, it is eight o'clock. We've called a meeting to order and can everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'll open it up for public discussion. That's not on the agenda of the talk.
So, um, I'm a citizen taxpayer. I'm also an employee of this county and-
Can you come up to the podium and introduce yourself?
My name is Brian Underwood and, uh, I've been here seven years. But, uh, we went through an incident like this years ago when I was an employee in Bogona County. Um, we went through a budget issue and all the department heads, board supervisors needed to work together to make those cuts. You know, we had to cut back on mileage and gas and overtime. But we made it work, you know, because these guys, the employees, that's what it matters. And we need to start getting back to the basics of running this as a business, you know, not doing things, you know, on the norm. It's about needs and not wants. I can tell you from experience from the department I'm working in, it's still day-to-day, normal operations, even with everything that's going on right now. There's no concerns of overtime. There's no concerns of, you know, spending. You know, I don't, I haven't seen any or heard any real solutions, but why can't we take a, for every dollar that's spent, take a penny out of the budget for every dollar spent? I don't, I would think that would add up to be a lot of money, but if you can't cut a penny out of every dollar you're spending, that's a spending problem. We've made a necessary spending issue. Well, last year we helped pay for two deputies go to Nashville and they took their wives with them to a conference. This year they're going again to Florida. Supposedly they're paying it on their own, but they're taking a county vehicle. Well, if they're taking time off and once they're inside of a county vehicle, I think you're, you're on the clock. But these are the concerns, this, this is kind of stuff that needs to be taken care of, you know, and like, you know, purchasing $6,000 worth of ballistic floor mats that don't even, you know, rifles go right through them. You're not going to be carrying around a ballistic floor mat to every call you go to. I mean, you just, it's nonsense spending to me. And I really think you guys are the ones that are, you're gonna have to make that decision to tell the supervisors or to tell the department heads enough's enough. We get, we gotta, this is it. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public discussion?
Fair Board.
Come on up.
Got some paperwork for everybody here.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
This is kind of what our, what our fair did, life-year expenses stuff. Then we did a feasibility study. We got a company hired for the grandstands.
Do you have these, do you have one for Carter too?
Yeah, yeah, I can, yep.
Or he can have mine too.
No, I got one for everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, the feasibility study was kind of interesting.
So last week I know that you guys decided to cut our funding by $30,000. One of the things that we want to bring to you is, I know you think that Kyle's made a mention about when the 30,000 just goes into our, our fund for the grandstand renovation or whatever. But we put it in there because we have to raise 65% of the money to be able to even apply for any grants. So we're putting that money in there, but yet we're still using the money in our general fund to pay for improvements. So last year, um, we did, uh, $34,672.94 worth of improvement to the fairgrounds. Our insurance was $36,135. The judges and the ribbons was $63.7149. Electricity in 2023 was $35,098.64. Fair cost to put on was $117,019.65. And we, we get $10,155.01 cents from the state funding to put it on. Now Valero donated some money to put it on and things like that. But some of the improvements we're doing now is we're gonna cement the, we're gonna cement the hog barn out, which costs 70 or 80,000 dollars with the, FFA kids have donated around $20,000. But the rest is still in our pocket. Our biggest complaint we had last year is our show barn is really, really hot all the time. So we need to, we were trying to figure out how to try and cool that off. So we decided we're gonna spray foam it to try and keep it cooler. And the community foundation gave us, I think the project was around 40,000 and they give us 20,000. They did 19 something, so, so there's 20,000 we had to come up with out of our own pocket, along with some other things and things like that. You know, this affects a lot of people in our community. There's over 200 kids enrolled in, in 418 Cassuth County and there's over 45 people that have volunteered. And I know for us as a fair board, we put countless hours, hours in volunteering to make sure this is better and doing things to raise some money, but that 30,000 is a blow to us. And, you know, and as, as people look for renovations, if we go and do it, we look like the bad guys. Yeah, the, part of the 75,000 of the hog barn was, is gonna need to be pulled from the funds that we have already raised for the, because we've had a lot of complaints slash, hey, we need some improvements in here and we, you know, we agreed, okay, we'll, we'll do it. And on the very last page, the, the sharing group, that $19,482, I, that went into the grandstand fund. So it's not like the 30,000 that you guys give us just sits there. We, you know, that's part of our grandstands funds that we had to pay them guys, $19,000, which would come up to be about, what another, I think it was 30, I think it's $30,000.
That's just a partial payment.
That's just a partial payment.
Figure this all out, so.
Right. So we, so we did a feasibility study. We hired a group out of Ames, the Perry Group, and they came out, I think they interviewed 24 people from around our community and county to see, to talk about the grandstands. And as you see, you've got, you've got a copy, all of you guys got a copy of everything that was said in that thing. And they're anonymous, we don't even know who said what.
We have no idea.
But, but the one thing we found out is the community thinks that we need to redo the grandstands or do something with it, but they also think the supervisors need to be a part of this and be on board. Because if they're not on board, the odds of this going through are probably really slim. So, and so we give you a copy of the same copy that we got, so you guys can read through it at your own dime and, and listen or look at comments from the community.
Thank you for, for providing the documents here. So, any questions from you guys? I guess I don't have any immediately right now. Anyone else have any questions?
Thanks, guys.
Reach me anytime.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we can all review that after the meeting here outside. Okay?
I was wondering, where did the $400,000 come from in the treasury fund? Why wasn't it in the budget to start with?
It was an increase in-
Revenue.
Increase in revenue above what was projected. It's not like it just-
Why wasn't it in the-
Because we weren't projecting interest rates to go where they did. That, it's that simple.
Two weeks difference, I mean.
What do you mean?
When you first had the budget.
No, it's in, it's in this budget that would be right now.
This is-
Not next year's, it's in the budget of currently.
This is stuff that was planned well over a year ago that's happening today. This current year, yeah.
The other thing, last weekend you had over 20 of the road department crew here. Maybe you guys need, they won't allow so many take vacation a day. That happened on a regular day, you'd have nothing done in the county.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else for public discussion? All right, we move on. If it would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Thanks, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. Any discussion or correction in the minutes? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Next up is reviewing and approving claims. Has everyone had a chance to review them in your packet? There's not any questions or concerns, identity and motion? Okay, I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. And our, we'll get to sign all that stuff here. Second, the next thing up here is our resolution for, or the proclamation, sorry. Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation that was in our packet. Does anyone have any question? Oh, feel free, come on up.
I'm Jessie Hansen, I'm from Upper Moone Opportunity. I'm the Kids Program Director. I am here representing the Cassuth County Care Team, which is our local prevention council. The reason that I brought this to you today is because our local prevention council is affiliated with Prevent Child Abuse Iowa, who is a group within Iowa that we come together as community members to support the efforts of prevention in our community. And so that looks like a lot of different things. Child Abuse Prevention Month is here in April and so typically in the past, we have done pinwheel gardens. We have put out signs to promote child abuse prevention. This year we also did some blue frosted donuts at the local donut shop. And then we also have other promotional marketing events that we do as well. And so I'm here as a representative of that group to have you sign a proclamation recognizing that child abuse prevention is important in our community. Cassuth County is ranked number 14 according to a 2019 survey. And obviously you don't typically want to be towards the top. But that's why it is important to bring recognition to child abuse prevention. And I just have a couple of things for you to, to take to maybe spark some conversations. And then if you do want more information about what we can do in child, in child abuse prevention for Cassuth County, I have some handouts for you on the back. There's some actionable steps that we could take.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have lots of goodies. Yep, and if Carter wants some too, we can get him some.
We still do pinwheels, Jessie?
We do and actually add up pinwheels at the moment, so I do need you to reorder those.
Okay.
So yeah, but it was like so much and also get some to you as well.
Yeah, we could probably put some up in our entryway downstairs if you have some extra.
Perfect, thank you for considering and supporting child abuse prevention.
Well, um, is Board of any questions for Jessie? Yes, if not, I entertain a motion for this proclamation. Okay, thanks. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. And want this copy signed?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. All righty, uh, we are up to discussion on the budget with KCEDC. Maureen and everyone else, feel free to come on up.
Pass on a few extra things that have come in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some things we'll reference to, I want Carter to-
Thank you. Good morning and thank you for your time today. My name is Sean Noonan, I'm the President of Cassuth County Economic Development. And, um, I would just like to make a brief opening statement and then I'll turn this over to my colleagues. In December we came here with our budget, provided that to you, and we requested funding in the amount of $125,000, which is what we've requested and been appropriated for well over 10 years now. In that time, we've had several emergency spending issues. For instance, offices struck by lightning, took out the computer system. We did not come for emergency funding back to the Cassuth County supervisors. We maintained it, we did it ourselves. We've cut $28,000 from our budget over the last four years through reorganizing employees and making cuts to be deemed necessary to continue on as an organization. It's come to our attention that we are being cut by $50,000. That's 40% reduction from what we've had over the last 10 years. Not only is that going to make, if that is ongoing from this year on, that's gonna make our ability to function as an organization is gonna put it in peril, to be quite frank. So the other issue that is going on right now is many of you are aware that Maureen is planning to retire this year. We've already begun a search of qualified candidates and we've actually, to our knowledge of a couple that are very qualified that we're going to interview. If this goes through and if this gets to them, I'm afraid that's, they're gonna walk away. They're not gonna be interested. So, in closing, I, I just want you to say, I appreciate the cooperative we've had over so many years now and I'd like that to continue, but this reduction, I think it's gonna put that in peril. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Craig Floyd from Wesley. I'm also here for KCEDC. KCEDC is for the county. They, they are a tremendous asset, especially for the smaller communities. And this reduction in the funds is gonna hamper that big time. I don't know if we'd be able to recover back from that. The businesses that they brought in, the business that support KCEDC, the communities, this is gonna hurt them all. And we really want you to reconsider what you're giving us. Thank you.
Jacob Jaden, City Administrator for Algonah and Member of the KCEDC Board. For a number of years, Steve Algonah was not a member of KCEDC. Three years ago, we rejoined as a dues-paying member. And part of the main reason for that is looking at rule viability in our community and ability to attract and retain population and workforce. We realized we all need to work together. And, you know, as the county goes, the city goes and vice versa. And even more importantly, working regionally with, we see with people commuting, choosing where they want, where they want to live and then finding where to work. And as we, you know, go through these challenges of rule viability, you know, it's frustrating to see these cuts, understanding that, you know, it's a tough budget situation. We're making, you know, potentially making cuts at what cost? They may not show up on the ledger, but those, those opportunity costs of that business that didn't expand or, or didn't come here because they weren't recruited or weren't aware of the information. So, you know, I encourage you to reconsider this year's allocation. And it's something that if you want to, you know, look at, you know, certainly have to write, you know, in the future. But especially right now with the transition and looking to recruit or find someone in the region to take on the, you know, executive director role. You know, if I was someone looking at that position and I saw, you know, this in the news, it'd make me very wary in terms of, you know, pursuing or accepting that position and wondering the long-term viability and support of economic development. So, thank you.
Jett Scuderman, Iowa Lake Selection Cooperative and the next up is the member of the Board of Directors that I've been for 15 years. Just the things that the economic development team brings to your county is, is immeasurable. If you look at the different projects that we've participated with, the men with the Sua Day Project, the locker in Whittamore, the West Bend Fire Hall, all these different projects that have brought a lot of money into the communities and helped provide extra services to your communities. It's like I said, it's immeasurable. This should be supported to some degree. I don't know what your budget situation is exactly, but I would appreciate you reconsidering what your cut is to the KCEDC this year.
Well, I appreciate your time and thank you for allowing us to come back and have a discussion with you because we knew nothing about this. This was a complete shock to us. We did not have a conversation with anyone prior to this, so we were not knowledgeable as a department head, so to speak, or others were very knowledgeable of this. During the time that I was at my conference from Wednesday through Friday, I did privately have a conversation with some of my really close professional friends that I've had for many, many years who have been partners with us and here in Cassuth County and in particular, ITC Midwest. We, our office through that time where the transmission lines were going up, we had to open our doors to all of them, whether it was Mid-America and ITC Midwest. We had to stop, provide them any statistical information. I will tell you, there were times where the plat map was incorrect. We had to locate and identify who were the actual corrupt owners of the land. Again, also when the wind turbines were going up, you know, of course, we had to stay neutral as you all had directed us, which we did. But you also told us that if they needed to use our office for a meeting or that they needed to have statistical information, again, and there were quite a few of them. And also we had the land management group that was right down below in our building at that time. I was, I, this is not a story to tell you. Sometimes he would come up three times a day while we were trying to get other things done and fulfill our deadlines. He would come up and ask us, okay, can you get this for me? Can you get this for me? And of course, we provided that information to them.
So he was constantly requesting landowner names, phone numbers, contact information, so they could continue with their process.
Census, anything that he had that was going to be a draw for our economic impact, which we do on an annual basis, which our businesses in our areas request that. And I'm gonna lead you to a couple of the letters. I just want to reference what's in your packet because, because I'd really like you to take the time to do this. I would like you to read their letters. One is from Bruce Newsom with Iowa Area Development Group. And he references that the timing right now, when you're in the process, we're in the process of recruiting qualified economic developers. Right now, I do not know their names, but I was informed from our recruiter Wednesday morning when I was leaving for the conference that we have two very qualified individuals that have put their applications in. Now, I did ask a very good friend of mine who, the two of us over the years have worked together. She's asked me about what would I do in projects? I've asked her, what would you, what would she do if, if she was in my shoes? And I just asked her overall and I, I actually have what her, her answers are, which were questions. She said, if I was a potential candidate, I'd have a lot of questions here and I would ask. And at the very last, this is what she said. This is too high risk, I would never move here. This is a person that could have been a candidate. I also want to reference to the fact that ITC Midwest, Troy Reary, provided a letter of support. He too referenced that this could be a larger problem, even though we can have a rippling effect all over. We can have Palo Alto Board of Supervisors, we can have communities all around. And so in essence, what could be the beginning of the end is starting right here with this budget that you've cut. And there are people that sit on our board and have sat on our board. And you know, when we have our budget and you see it, sometimes there's never a carryover on a monthly basis. Sometimes if anything, nothing more than $2,000. So we have a very skeletal budget. And as Sean had referenced, we have already cut $28,000 and that's just because a staff person has gone, you know, has cut tiny-
Right.
Over that time period. I also want to reference to the fact, and this is, I think, very important. This actually came from our conference at Iowa Rural Development Summit, which I just attended. She used to be the State Director, she was the interim State Director, it's Mary Lawyer. And if you look at this, she has a path of how economic development has grown into this very fast, vast situation. And we as economic developers have to be this resource, we have to be knowledgeable. We have to know who's the person that we need to contact to provide that information to whomever is requesting it. Is it a company and is it a community? So, but all of a sudden, we have to be experts in daycare, now housing. You know, it's not getting smaller. And my question to you is, if you don't have economic development, an office here that is provided for the county, because right now, I'm really questioning if this is the beginning to the end. And I'm really saying to you, who's gonna do the work? Who's going to do the county revolving loan fund? Tammy, are you? Are you gonna be meeting with the cus, the clients that want to start up a business?
No.
Who is going to gather?
Because with that said, as long as we're talking about revolving loan fund, that's meeting with the clients, helping them with the application process, getting their business plans created, looking at the financial projections, then coming back to the table, making sure everything is complete so I can get that information to the review committee and to the bank who they're working with, because we have to work with a bank too. So, and then you're monitoring their monthly payments. You're making sure at the end of the year, they're getting their 1096 tax forms so they can report the interest earned or paid. So there's all that just alone with revolving loan fund. So if we have to make any more cuts, that might be one of the cuts because that takes quite a bit of labor, of manpower. And I'm already part-time, so.
Also, who's going to do the statistical analysis that are needed? Who's gonna go and have the call visits with all of our businesses that are major companies and keep that connected and get it into our E4, EDC Forge system, our software, so that our utilities in our state can look at it and be provided the guidance that they need to have? Who is going to talk to them about what kind of resources do they need? Is it technological? Is it that they're looking at an expansion? And sometimes that happens quite often, that they will say, it may not be happening right now. It could be happening in a couple of years. So if you don't keep that connection going, we aren't going to have the sustainability that we have had in Cassuth County. And I think we've done an excellent job, and I am going to say, I think we've done an excellent job at keeping connected with our businesses and keeping that relationship going. They know that they can come in and that I'm a phone call away or a text away because many of them have my cell phone number. I'm not trying to brag here, I am not, because I'm gonna be leaving. But I've worked here for 26 years. This has been very, very important. This has grown over the years. And you as Board of Supervisors have been very, very supportive. And I understand that all the other departments are just as important as us. But I want you to understand the overall impact that this can have because it doesn't just stop here. It's going to have a rippling effect and I know that it will. I do know that I have people from the other county that has talked to me. Please understand that we're asking you that we are at a very bare minimum. I don't know where we will pull 50,000. I don't unless we start cutting some of those major things that we've talked to you about. And I do appreciate you allowing us to get on the agenda. Thank you very much for that. And thank you overall for the other years of, of, of support that you have provided to us. And if you have any questions, I would be more than happy. But I would like to allow Carter- Carter to be able to have time to read the information, and if he has any questions, I will definitely be an open door. I don't know, is today's being taped?
Yeah.
Maybe he could review the tape. But if he does have any questions, I would like to have that open door with him. He is my representative, he is Linda's representative. Any of you have questions right now?
Jack, you got any thoughts or anything?
No. You know I've been staunch supporter.
You have this?
We, we're in a, we're in a tough, tough budget here.
Five times?
I've never seen in 20 years. And we've cut other, we've cut other places way more than the economic development, I mean, like 100% in those places. There's just no easy answers. This is, this is the toughest budget I've ever seen. Right, right. Expenses just went through the roof last year. I guess inflation, everything just caught up with the economy and just ballooned things beyond imagination.
Jackie, do understand that, and I appreciate what you've said, because that's exactly what I, we do feel, everybody is important. But I, I know that we aren't under, really, you're not paying our wages, and you're not paying our rent, and you're not paying our insurance. It goes into our operations, and that's what we're seeing. We really appreciate it. And we don't have any extra outlets right now to go to. And as Sean referenced, when we do, when we do have emergencies, we are an organization that comes knocking at your door. We never have done that. We've tried to make amends or do things in such that we actually didn't order all of the computers that we really did need, we just had staff go from one to the next until the next year that we could make it up in the budget. So we really did, we do try to. I'm going to reference to that, this girl is a very good girl, knowing her finances, and she is one that, you know, we know where to, to handle that. And I'm, but again, I, I do want to thank you. I'm, I'm not here to, we've always supported the Board of Supervisors, that's been a rule from day one, when I have been in our office. I have told staff that there is no talking about our Board of Supervisors outside our office. Now I'm going to tell you that we may have conversations within our office, but I am going to say that, you know, that was one thing that we have to support our, our Board of Supervisors. And again, as Sean has said, you've been very good to us over the years, so.
I've been very, very grateful for your support. And we're so thankful that you sit on our Board of Directors. We appreciate that too, and your time for that. But again, with $28,000 being cut these last four years, I don't know where else we can cut. You know, unless it's such important projects like city clerk quarterly meetings, the HR networking meetings. I mean, I know I'm going to be charged by the exec board, because they're going to say, okay, Linda, you know the budget. Where can we focus? What do these projects and, and these different programs that we offer, where can we cut? And what, you know, so we're just going to have to investigate and look at all that if you can't reconsider. And we hope that you can, because we don't want to have to cut any of those programs. The communities really appreciate that too. And we have not had to increase the community's annual commitment either. We've had that same rate for the last 10 years, such as your Board of Supervisors, because we've been physically responsible with our budget. So we haven't had to increase at all.
Roger, you have any thoughts?
I have any more, Josh?
Yeah, Josh?
Yeah, I didn't like the, the cut all the, I mean, we're having to cut a lot of different areas, and it's, it's been pretty tough. I, I really wasn't on board with cutting it too much, and...
Well, maybe you can look at what we have and...
Yeah, and we can review the packet and, and talk about it again, but I do think that economic development is an important piece of our community, and I, I was concerned about the ripple effect there. And I, I think that's something we need to, well, we'll review our budget numbers as we have them right now here later on in our meeting, but I think that's something we need to look at harder going forward. So?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate it.
Alright, next up, we have transfers that auditor made in our, in our packet. Has everyone seen them? Alright, you know, questions will acknowledge the transfers. Next up is a resolution for updating depositories by the reporter and sheriff.
So this is something that we do in January of each year.
Yeah.
And when the auditing firm was here, they recommended that Karen increase hers. It was 50,000. They encouraged her to increase it to 100,000. So that's what this is, just increasing hers from 50,000 to 100,000.
Did they say why?
Um, because she's had deposits more than 50,000.
At one time?
Yes.
Okay.
And then sheriff, have you changed at all? It's just, just...
Just hers. Yep, they just have, theirs is together, their depository is together.
It's on the same resolution. Okay. Okay, so, and this is, okay, we got motion second, this is Resolution 04162401. You guys want that incorporated in your motion? Okay? Any further discussion or questions on the resolution? Roll call, vote please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Next up is Todd, closed session. Yeah, I think it's, it's safe to assume you're requesting and recommending we go into closed session for this topic. Just wanted that on record. Okay, we have a motion go into closed session in a second. Did you get those?
Yes.
Perfect. And we will, which, which recordings after we get voted here. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Plath? Jerks? Whacker?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously.